Good morning, everyone. I am Councilman Paris Gray, member of the Budget and Appropriation Committee, and representative of the great 8th District of Baltimore. At this moment, I will please ask everyone to turn off your cellphones or mute your cellphones, please. Also joining us today is President Zeke Cohen. We have Vice Chair Isaac Yitzchislyfer, sorry, Vice President Middleton. We also have Councilman Mark Parker from the 1st District, Councilman Mark Conway from the 4th District. We have Councilwoman Odette Ramos from the 14th District, Councilman Zach Blanchard from the 11th District, and Councilman Jermaine Jones from the 12th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We also have several representatives from the Mayor's Office and City Council President's Office. The committee staff person for this period through noon will be Perona Nandi. And on the agenda today is Council Bill 250060, Ordinance of Estimates for Fiscal Year Ending June 30 of 2026. This is day one of the agency budget hearings for the purpose of providing the appropriations estimated to be needed by each agency of the City of Baltimore for operating programs and capital budgets projects during the fiscal 2026 year, effective July 1, 2025 through June 30 of 2026. There will be a change in committee rules. All council members will be allowed to ask questions during the budget hearing. Also, just want to let you know that I'll be filling in until Chair McCray gets here today. Also a reminder that for the audience listening, there will be no public testimony. No public testimony is allowed during budget hearings. And without further ado, we're going to start our agency presentations. And we're starting with BBMR Finance.
Good morning, Mr. Council President, members of the council. My name is Laura Larson. I'm the city's budget director. I am going to begin us today by talking about the budget for the service that I lead on behalf of the city, Service 708, Operating Budget Management Research, or the Bureau of the Budget and Management Research. The recommended budget for our bureau is $3.1 million to fund 19 positions. Our bureau is comprised of three teams: revenue and long-range planning, that includes our Assistant Budget Director Pedro Aponte, and analysts who are responsible for managing and monitoring the various revenue streams that support the city's general fund, as well as preparing the city's tenure projection. Our expenditure team is led by Deputy Budget Director Ben Brash and is the largest portion of our team, and that is comprised of budget analysts that are assigned to a portfolio of city agencies. Our analysts support agencies both in the development of the operating budget, as well as in the oversight of the operating budget. And then finally, we have a policy and planning team, and that team is responsible for preparing legislative fiscal notes for bills that are moving their way through the council, as well as legislation that is moving as part of the annual General Assembly process. That team also includes staff that are coordinating around the city's performance plans. In terms of major highlights for our budget fiscal '26, there is $60,000 that is transferred out of Service 708 to Service 915, Corporate and Revenue Compliance within the Finance Department. We are transferring funds to that service to cover contractual staffing within Service 915. We are transferring savings from dollars that were previously allocated for an internship program and various contractual services within the bureau. In terms of our performance measures, in fiscal '26, we are going to work to publish five management research reports that examine various city services or operations. We are aiming for a 2% accuracy regarding our revenue forecast, and we are aiming to turn around all items that are submitted to us for Board of Estimates review within three days. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
And before we start, I just want to give the floor to President Zeke Cohen.
Thank you, Chairman Gray. Thank you to our colleagues. Thank you to all the agency folks. Thank you, Director Larson. I just want to appreciate the very opportune time we stand in as a city. I think we are in the midst of historic declines in violent crime. We are seeing, for the first time in over a decade, our population rebound. We have just some true hope and promise and opportunity in our city, and we know we have some very significant headwinds, both coming from a fiscal perspective, challenges that our state is facing financially, as well as an administration that is much more challenging to cities like Baltimore than its predecessor was. And so I'm really looking forward to some deep engagement with BBMR, with finance, with all of our agencies. I think this is a great moment for the City of Baltimore, and I want to just thank Director Larson for the ongoing engagement, dialogue, conversation that you have been having with our office, with council members. I appreciate the back and forth and the responsiveness on data that you all have managed. So with that, I'm looking forward to kicking off this morning, and I'm looking forward to a long but joyful week of budget hearings. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I'm going to forego my questions as just a committee member, and I will see the first questions to Council President Cohen.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Director Larson, the Department of Finance overspend its budget in FY '24 by $4.2 million. What fiscal controls are in place between both your office and, again, from a more citywide perspective? Last week, we held a hearing in the Committee of the Whole where we examined overtime and vacancies, particularly long-term vacancies. And so I wanted to pick up on that thread and just ask about how, as an administration, we are making sure our agencies are in line, and your office as well, and every office in the City of Baltimore.
Certainly. So just in regards to the Finance Department's budget, I would encourage you to direct questions regarding the fiscal '24 performance for the department to Director Moxton when he gives his remarks about the overall Finance Department. I will just note that my service ended fiscal '24 with a surplus within the overall agency. In terms of how we approach oversight for agencies citywide, my team's major role is through our quarterly projections process. And so we perform budget-to-actual forecasting at the first quarter, second quarter, and third quarter. And what we're doing in that process is, for both revenues and expenditures, we're looking at the trends that we can see in that quarter, and we're trying to predict where we're going to be at the end of the fiscal year. What we saw in fiscal '24 was that a number of agencies were trending over. We also see that, to some degree, in fiscal '25. What happens is, after we complete the projections internally, and that is a collaborative process between the analysts on my team and city agency fiscal staff and operational staff, we will compile the entire projection, and we will then review it with the city administrator and representatives from the Mayor's Office to discuss where we're trending and to discuss any corrective actions that the city needs to consider in order to slow spending. After we wrap up that internal briefing, then we prepare for the briefing to the Budget and Appropriations Committee, which we do quarterly, and we come and we report out on where things are trending from both a revenue and an expenditure side. Based off of any guidance that comes out of any sort of corrective actions that are put in place based off of those projections, my staff and I are coordinating with other members of finance leadership to put into place various controls, whether that be through purchasing, or whether that be through, you know, additional review or authorization regarding various personnel spending. And so, you know, that is really the role that we play in terms of trying to ensure that agencies are able to stay within budget.
Right. Appreciate that. But again, we've had year over year where agencies have not been able to stay within budget, and so did want to ask, heading into 2026, do you believe we are in line for a tighter control over agency overtime spending, contract spending, that which would push? And the reason I want to sort of frame and start questions in this space is, you know, I think it's really important, as this committee engages and negotiates over the budget, that we have the full picture, that we know, you know, within reason what it is going to look like. And so did want to ask, again, we saw last week in the Committee of the Whole some of the challenges around just keeping agencies within budget. As we project into this year, FY '26, do you feel like we are in a better place to control overspending? And can you articulate what those fiscal controls look like as we head into this budget conversation?
I think a lot of it comes down to how we are approaching the technology that supports how we implement the budget. And so, you know, we've spent a lot of time in this chamber talking about the city's implementation of Workday, the ERP tool. So I think it's, when we talk about the deficit in fiscal '24, I think it's important to remember, the city went live with Workday in August of 2022, so one month into fiscal '23. What we saw in fiscal '23 was that agency spending was a lot lower than what we had seen in prior years. And that can be attributed to what we saw as we transitioned into Workday, a lot of things slowed down, mainly on the procurement side. It was really hard for people to buy stuff. And so there were all of these log jams that were created in fiscal '23. We saw a larger surplus in '23 than what we would have expected. What happened in fiscal '24, and under the direction of our new procurement bureau head, Director Manny, you saw a lot of those log jams start to get cleared. And so what I think it was partially contributing to our fiscal '24 deficit was that there was a backup of things from '23 that carried over into '24. And so that's why I think '24 is a little bit of a unique year, because we can point to a lot of instances where there was double purchasing for things that were backed up. Also, in fiscal '24, you saw a lot of growing pains associated with people figuring out how to charge things correctly to various accounts. In the beginning of the Workday implementation, people were just focused on getting stuff paid. And so what that meant is that the discipline around making sure that you were using the appropriate accounts to ensure that things were being charged to the appropriate place, a lot of that was not in place. So we've seen people get a lot stronger in all of those areas. Based off of getting over those humps, I've been able to work with colleagues in Finance, as well as the Department of Human Resources, to talk about where we made assumptions in the Workday implementation, about business processes and budget approvals and budget checks, where we made assumptions that weren't necessarily playing out the way that we wanted them to. So what we saw was, initially in Workday, a lot of things were decentralized out to agencies, and it was up to agencies to fully ensure that positions were getting set up to the right accounts, or contracts were getting charged to the right accounts. What we saw is that, without having that sort of centralized check that, for many years, was performed by BBMR, you saw agencies go over and trend over, or charge things to incorrect accounts. We, this year, were able to redo the workflow for all of the business processes associated with personnel actions, and we're putting in new controls on the purchasing actions for budget checks that will go into effect on July 1st. So that was a long way to answer your question, that I do believe that in fiscal '26, we are on stronger footing, and a lot of that, unfortunately, has just been due to sort of working our way through the growing pains of this new system. And I would say that fiscal '26 is one of the more stabilizing years that we have seen, certainly in my tenure in this role.
Got it. And I'm just going to conclude here, but just for a little bit of a look back, so that we can look forward, what agencies are on track right now to overspend their budget for '25? And specifically for those agencies, what is in place to rein them in, make sure they're more accurate for '26? And I appreciate and understood all you said about changeover in system, but also suppose that pandemic and ARPA and all the rest probably played into it. But as we look forward, I want to make sure we have tight enough fiscal controls that we're not significantly overspending in any agencies. And so talk to me about who's on track, who's off track, and what we're doing for those agencies to make sure they get back on track.
So out of all of the city agencies that have general fund appropriations, there are 12 agencies that, as of the third quarter, were projected to have a deficit.
Sorry, how many?
12. What we've been doing with each of those different agencies is working with them to figure out what sort of controls we can put in place to rein in spending. Again, and this work has been happening with these agencies since mid-March, in order to try to control costs as much as possible. And again, that plays out a little bit differently in each of these agencies, because the driver of the deficit is different in each of them. In some of these agencies, it's driven by contractual costs; in other agencies, it's driven by staffing costs. And so what we're doing is, we're working with all of them to figure out what discretionary items could be put on pause in order to ensure that they stay within budget. We've also been placing an additional review in terms of their personnel actions, to ensure that what they are, that they have a sustainable plan for those items that they're putting forward. That's especially true for things like position reclassifications or increases, like contractual positions, that sort of thing. And then the other piece that we're doing is, we're working with each of these different agencies to ensure that, wherever possible, if there were costs that were assumed outside of the general fund, but that they've fallen within the general fund, that we're getting that cleaned up.
Understood. Look, very much appreciate the work you all are doing. I think just in speaking for this body, there is continued concern about not wanting to see significant overspend in certain agencies, and then a retroactive backend supplemental that the council is asked to approve, when we don't ultimately have control over that money on the front end. And so my continued ask, as we move forward into these budget hearings, is going to be that we are just being as transparent, as honest about where agencies are versus where they're going, as we possibly can be, so that we don't end up having to approve supplementals on the back end.
And one thing just to note, in terms of the retroactive supplementals, with these agencies, particularly these agencies that are in deficit, with just a handful of exceptions, all of these agencies have been projecting these deficits for the whole fiscal year. So we've been talking, this is, the numbers that we were talking about at the third quarter are not inconsistent with what we were seeing at the first or second quarter. It has been past practice to do the supplementals at the end of the year, to do one round of them, based off of the final amounts. Because again, we would like, our goal is to work with agencies to slow spending, to minimize supplementals. If there, you know, we can certainly have conversations with the council as well, to think about how we approach the quarterly projections next year, to make this, to ensure that that is meeting your expectations, and avoiding the feeling of that everything is happening very retroactively.
I really appreciate that. I just think it's a more honest conversation, if we're clear and we're not being asked to sign off on something that has already been baked.
Certainly.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're going to go to Council, our Vice President, Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to piggyback on something the Council President had mentioned, and I guess something you had just mentioned about contractual services. And every time I hear contractual, it like gives me thought on, are we going back to contractual services? As this city is built on career-based government jobs, contractual services are kind of not in my vocabulary. We know that this mayor and the council, we support internship programs, apprenticeship programs, and in light of what's happening in the federal government, we really need to stay career-focused, so that our residents leaving high school or college, that we keep them here in really good government jobs, if that's their focus. So I'm hoping that, as you mentioned contractual services, and you did also mention that, you know, we're on a stronger footing, that we also stay career-focused with good government union jobs. Your comments?
Yeah. I think that is a really great line of question there. And I know that this administration, the Scott administration, is very committed to working with city agencies to create positions that, you know, are in line with the current staffing model of providing services, and then supporting agencies in terms of making sure that they're able to fill and retain individuals in those positions. And so I think in this budget, you're going to hear different examples of that from different city agencies. Just a couple off the top of my head that I can think of, you know, there's investment in the Fire Department for their apprenticeship program. That's a partnership between the department and city schools to try to create pathways to get young students in the city connected with different opportunities in our Fire Department. Director Garvin from the Mayor's Office of Employment Development can talk a lot about the different work that her team is leading in terms of supporting various city agencies around their apprenticeship programs. And Director Attila, when he comes in to speak about the general services budget, will be able to talk about some of the successes that the fleet team has had in terms of leveraging different apprenticeship programs in order to support fleet operations. So, you know, I think we can point to lots of different examples where we're trying to do this more. When we talk about contractual services, you know, that includes a variety of expenditures within the city's budget, and, you know, different services have to sort of look to outside support for a variety of reasons. But, you know, we continue to work really closely with those agencies to figure out how that is truly a supplement, you know, for a project-based task, rather than something that people are relying on to provide core service day in and day out.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Councilman Schleyfer.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Director Lawson. Thank you for your great work on this. I can't imagine the task that you guys go through every year, and Bob, you know, used to do every year, dealing with getting the numbers from every agency, and it's a heavy lift, and so my hat's off to you. So thank you for that. Just a couple of questions. And follow up to last week's hearing that you're here, we're talking about the vacancies and a lot of these positions, and there's thousands that are currently open today. One of the key things in transparency and budgeting is about knowing what the impact is going to be on our constituents. And so we learned that, you know, there's possibly over 600 new taxes that our constituents are going to be forced to pay this coming year. I had requested a list of what, all of those items, basically everything that's in Group 1 that we discussed. When could we get a full list of that? Because it's really important that, as we're looking at the budget and we talk about, you know, these tens of millions of dollars in new, you know, new taxes, that we explain to our constituents what that's going for. We know what certain high-level ones are, like, you know, if you call 911 and you need an ambulance, you're going to pay more. But we should know what many of the other ones are as well.
Yeah. So we have been, my team has been working through a citywide fee study. This is the first time we're doing a comprehensive review of the city's 2,000-plus fees since 2008. The way that that study is working is, we took that universe of 2,000-plus fees, we divided them into three groups. We're working through each of the groups separately. So as you mentioned, we're currently working through Group 1. For each of the groups of fees, we're following essentially a three-step process. The first is to benchmark the fees, so looking at what our current fee structure looks like against peers, both here locally in Maryland, but also a set of peers nationally, in terms that would sort of align with the urban demographics of our city. In addition, following the benchmarking, what we're doing is, we're working with each of the different city agencies that's responsible for those fees, and what we are doing is analyzing the cost of providing the services associated with the individual fees. From there, we will identify, not every fee would necessitate an increase, right? Like, in that universe of 2,000 fees, some of them are probably properly aligned in terms of benchmark, in terms of the benchmark and the current cost of providing service. But for those that are not in alignment, what we will be doing then is looking at those in greater detail to analyze information, like, how are we collecting this fee? Who is burdened by a potential change to this fee? Who benefits by a potential change to this fee? And based off of that analysis, then we'll be able to further isolate and make recommendations for which ones are candidates to be increased. So that is a little bit about the process that is currently underway. As I mentioned, Group 1, we've been working on for a number of months, and that analysis will be wrapped up this summer, and then we will start work on Group 3, and then ultimately Group, or I'm sorry, Group 2, and then ultimately Group 3. In terms of the list of what is in Group 1, that's a dataset that I've been working with the city administrator on managing, and so I can coordinate with her and her team in terms of sharing that information to show what subset of fees are included. I can say generally, it's largely fees that fall within the Fire Department, the Housing Department, and the Transportation Department. And most of the items that are in this, in Group 1, these were fees that were not recommended for increases in 2008, as part of that study.
So, you know, yes, I do want that list. I mean, I did request it last week, and it's important to have that. You know, just in the general transparency of being able to look this up as a citizen, I mean, we have this open checkbook system that had a nice press conference, but then only received one upload. So, you know, it's quite a concern for, you know, our constituents, that they can't see how their money is being spent. And so certainly, it's just, it's a top priority to get that information, you know. And as far as, when we look at that, I think it's important to know specifics, because, you know, you were talking about what other jurisdictions are, you know, maybe charging for the, you know, what their tax rate, or what their taxes are on specific items or services. But we also should be looking at what the delivery of those services look like. And so we can't compare our permitting system here in Baltimore City to those of surrounding jurisdictions, when surrounding jurisdictions issue permits far quicker and more efficiently than we do. So it's not comparing apples to apples. So I guess we'll have that conversation once we get that list, and so I'll wait on that. My second question is really more of like a logistical, also in follow-up to our last hearing, where we spoke about a lot of these vacant positions, and ones that haven't been filled in a long time, and some that may be filled, but that those but that those pins are just sitting there. When an agency takes a salary for an individual and increases it, let's say an agency takes, you know, a high-level employee who's making $180,000 a year and they determine that they want to give that employee a significant raise and raise that salary up to $250,000. So they get a $70,000 a year increase. How is that funded? Do they take one of these vacant positions and and just scrap that individual position and just allocate that money towards an individual? Or is it coming from other sources of revenue? How are agencies doing that, giving these large bumps to employees?
Yeah. So the first thing is if, in your scenario, if somebody wants to upgrade the salary of, let's say, an existing position, there are various HR-related policies that have to be followed. So you can't just say like, Bob's doing an awesome job, so we want to pay him $50,000 more. There are different stipulations within the different union contracts depending on sort of what union the position would fall into. And so the agency would have to ensure that if they're promoting the position that they would have, that they'd be in line with the requirements of the different union agreement for that pin. In terms of, from a financial perspective, in those scenarios, what we require is if an agency is upgrading a position or sometimes we'll see agencies, you know, abolish positions to create a different type of position. That happens pretty commonly throughout the fiscal year. What we do when those requests come in to my team is we look at the request and we look for an offset. We look to ensure that they, the position actions are net neutral. So what that means is, did an agency identify like another position that they can give up to cover this higher cost? Or did, can the agency point us to another line item in their budget that they're going to take down in order to fund that higher cost? So we are, we're working throughout the fiscal year to minimize sort of those hidden personnel costs that could result in year-over-year increases within agency budgets.
Gotcha. So that means, so when an agency does that, and we know that's happened quite often recently where there's been ballooning salaries and a lot of folks, especially on executive teams. And, you know, we spoke, we had a whole hearing at DPW about this where, I forgot what the numbers off the top of my head, but it was well over 100 people in the six figures who had gotten, you know, these significant increases while we're seeing some of our lower-wage workers being left behind. So is every single one of those actions, there's a corresponding direct deduction someplace else? So if, you know, if they take a position and they're giving it a $50,000 increase, there is a specific action that's tied to that specific increase? Or is this overall, if, you know, if an agency says, we want to take, you know, these 20 positions and give all these people, you know, $50,000 raise, here's how we're doing it? So is it one individually or is it more done as a group action?
It depends on how the request come, well, the short answer to your question is, yes, there is a corresponding offset for that. So we see these requests come to us in different ways. Some, sometimes we see them come as one-offs. And in other cases, we see them come as an entire package that where agencies are trying to do upgrades. But what we do is that every time they're looking to reclassify a position up or if they're coming to us for authorization for a compensation change or, you know, approval to hire above the midpoint, we're asking them what the corresponding offset is. And then we're working on tracking those items so that we can come back and make sure that we're, you know, when we're working on next year's budget, that we're capturing those offsets so that they're recurring.
Gotcha. And is that information public record or is that internal?
So that information is, right now, lives either in various workday business processes or in correspondence back and forth between my analysts and the agencies. It's not in a standard format that I could quickly turn around for you. What I can say is, sort of going back to my responses to the Council President, my team and I are working on going into fiscal '26, how we're leveraging different functionality and workday that hasn't been leveraged in the past so that we can report out on that on a more regular basis.
Thank you so much for that.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director Larson, for your great explanations, but also just for shepherding this whole budget creation process. I have a couple of questions. One is that my understanding of how the projections are done each year for property taxes is based on the assessments from S-Stat based on, you know, we get new assessments depending on the band when that occurs. However, I was wondering if we're also integrating into those projections the fact that as we rehab our vacant and abandoned properties, once the use and occupancy is added, the property gets reassessed immediately. And so last year in 2024, there were 915 BBNs taken off. So we had new use and occupancies. And I'm wondering if you also factor that into the projection and what that number, that amount of dollars that we're getting during the last two years with those rehabs? If we could have that amount. Do you factor that in?
So, so yes, in terms of our process for forecasting property tax, as you mentioned, the big data point for that is the assessment growth information that we get from S-Stat. That information comes to us usually around the December holidays, early January. So what happens is we bring that information into the overall property tax file. And then our revenue team led by Pedro Oponte, what they do then is they forecast out, you know, based off of the new assessments, what do we think the property tax will be? In addition to that, we are looking at the property tax file on a monthly and a quarterly basis as part of our quarterly projections, but also as part of our budget development to look at other changes to property taxes outside of the S-Stat assessment. And so we're picking up things like you mentioned, like vacant properties that might be coming back online. But we're also picking up assessment appeals where maybe the other thing to keep in mind is that when a property loses value, we have to eat that whole, that whole loss in one year. And so we're picking up any sort of major changes in terms of assessment loss. The other thing that we're picking up as we're monitoring this throughout the fiscal year is what's happening on the personal property tax side as well. And so we can work to go back into our data to figure out the vacant properties that have been factored in for the last two years. What I will tell you though, is that all of that revenue has been pulled out of the general fund for fiscal '26 moving forward because that revenue is needed to seed the non-contiguous TIF for the vacant strategy. So there was actually over $2 million worth of property tax revenue that was taken out of the general fund, starting in fiscal six, or fiscal '26 so that we can, that the borrowing can be issued in the newly-approved non-contiguous TIF.
Right. I understand how the TIF was working, but I thought that the revenues were taken out of just the ones that we had approved in our bill that we passed with the TIF. So it wasn't every single property. It was just the one, it was 7,000 of them, I think, that we had approved.
So there's a list of properties that we were given that were developed by the housing department in support with the project team that where we had to take the assessed value out of the general fund. And then what will happen moving forward is that additional incremental value from future vacant properties that are being rehabbed and coming back online, that revenue will also have to go in to the TIF moving forward in order to be able to support sort of the revolving borrowing.
I understand, but my, I thought that it was just the properties that we listed in the two bills that we passed. So that's about 7,000, a little over 7,000 properties that were approved to be in this quote-unquote "TIF district" where, you know, once the property is rehabbed, then the difference between, you know, when it was not rehabbed and when it was. And that revenue on those list of properties would go in to create the funding to allow us to borrow, right? Because that's the, for lack of a better word, you know, the debt service, if you will. And so the, but I didn't think it was all of the vacant properties because I thought we were still getting revenues from those that may not necessarily be in that grouping.
There were, we can certainly review this one and circle back as a follow-up. What I'm hearing for the follow-up request is you'd like for us to look at vacant properties that have been rehabbed and the, over the last two years and the proper, and the general fund property tax, or the general fund impact of those properties.
That's correct. And then since we're talking about the TIF, you know, whether or not they are listed in those, in the eight thousand, you know, 7,000, whatever we passed a couple, you know, last year. Because again, it wasn't my understanding that all of the revenue from all of those properties would. Now, that's a lot of properties. So it would probably capture most of the ones that we're talking about. But I'd be interested just to see, just to see that part. And then also related to that, my understanding from in the TIF, but also just in terms of the revenue, that the TIF does not include, you know, the transfer and recordation. So I saw in the executive summary that the transfer and recordation has increased, which is a good thing. That helps us understand that the market is actually happening, there's transactions occurring. That is a good thing. So I'd like to know, and I ask this every year, so you probably anticipated it. I'd like to know the income that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is going to have as a result. And I did not see that in the book at all.
We don't have that number in front of us here in terms of the portion of transfer and recordation that's going to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, but we can provide that as a follow-up. In terms of the revenue growth that you are seeing from transfer and recordation tax, it's up by almost, just over almost 14% compared to fiscal '25. And what is happening there is, that is largely driven by the increased, the increase in value per transaction that we're seeing. So if we look at where we were for the previous calendar, for the previous period of fiscal '24, the average home sale price was about $253,000. And for this period in fiscal '25, it's been closer to $265,000.
Well, it's driven by that, but also activity. Like if we weren't having sales, then you wouldn't have the transaction.
But actually, the number of transac, the number of transactions is down. But the value of the transactions is up.
Great. But yeah, if I could have those two items. So the first one was the, looking at the vacant properties and for the committee. And I'll also put this in writing and send it out as well so that everybody's clear about my request. And then, you know, as we're rehabbing those properties, how much revenue are we getting? And then how much of that is going into the TIF as opposed to, as for the debt service as opposed to, or the floating of the bonds as opposed to going into the general fund? Which is, we approved it, so it's just a math question. And then also the amount for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And Madam Chair, just a question on the rules. Are we doing two and then circulating?
We're doing two. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes, first, Director, thank you for all the work you do to support our agencies. Really appreciate it. And I understand that, you know, each agency kind of handles its own procurement sometimes, but I just had a question regarding change orders when it comes to like contracts. Are there any recommendations in place on how the agency should handle change orders that come in? And also, is, do you have any information versus like how frequent change orders come in when it comes to contracts and what those numbers look like versus the original, you know, bidded amount versus the end result that comes in?
I would actually recommend that we hold that question until we get to the finance department questions. Because our Director of Procurement, Adam Manning, will be able to speak to that question.
Thank you.
Outside of Councilwoman Ramos, are there any additional questions for BBMR? Okay, can we send these, can we fill these out and send these down if you have a question? Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director, could you let us know about the impact of some of the items that's come out of the state level is going to have on our budget? One is the lowering of the bond rating at Maryland. I don't think that impacts us, but I want to be clear about that. And then the second is the, there were some changes in the bracketing for income tax in the state budget and how we're seeing that in our budget.
Yes. So on the bond question, the city issues are, we have our own bonding authority. We are reviewed separately by the rating agencies and receive our own bond rating for the purposes of issuing debt. Similar to the change order question, I may also encourage us to hold that question for the finance department portion of the hearing because we're joined by the Bureau Chief for Treasury Management, Janelle Rogers, who is the department expert on that topic. Regarding the state budget impacts of the new income tax proposal, we know that the new brackets will largely come into effect in fiscal '27 just because of the timing of when those brackets kick in in relation to the tax year, which is calendar versus fiscal. When we saw the initial projection, the initial proposal that was in the governor's budget, that was actually going to wind up being a revenue hurt for the city because the sort of crux of the proposal was eliminate the ability to itemize deductions, which was going to generate additional revenue, but then increase the standard deduction that folks could take. And in all of the other jurisdictions in Maryland, that came out to be a net positive. But for Baltimore City, that was a revenue loss because we have a smaller number of itemized filers. And so what we saw was the additional revenue from eliminating itemized filings was going to be less than the increased cost of the standard deduction. Now, that was part of the back and forth down in Annapolis as they worked through the final income tax structure. We, I do not have an exact answer in terms of how the new brackets will impact us for fiscal '27. But what I can say is that we've been working in close partnership with Comptroller Learman and her team to do different modeling of the more detailed data that they have about city income tax filers so that we can build that forecast into our fiscal '27 model.
So it's not built in here for this model because the budget passed kind of late? And so we're able to make those projections later?
Exactly. And the first full year that that tax year would be in effect, we would see the impacts of that in our fiscal '27 budget. So that would be, that would be analysis that we'd be able to share with the council after we complete our initial forecast for '27 early this fall.
But I also saw in the projections in earlier hearings about, you know, where the rest of the state is anticipating a significant decrease in income tax because of the federal workers. And I didn't see that there was a significant decrease here. Are we not anticipating the same?
We, so that's a separate issue. Separately, all of the state and all of the jurisdictions have incorporated, have sort of downgraded our income tax projections for fiscal '26 based off of the, based off the assumption that we would start to see people fewer filings immediately and that there would be an immediate impact from that. That's where you saw us reduce our income tax projection by $5.9 million to reflect the slower growth.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Council President Cohen?
Thank you. I'm actually, I'll defer to Councilman Gray if that's all right.
Thank you, um, I'm actually, I'll defer to Councilwoman Gray, if that's all right, just to make sure he gets his question.
Thank you, Madam Chair and President Cohen. Has your team analyzed the revenue collection, um, collections that we as a city can either strengthen or where we're falling short? Um, and the reason I ask that question is we have a lot of, uh, to me, like, low-hanging fruit that we could actually strengthen, and when I talk about that, I'm talking about We Buy Houses signs, uh, campaign signs, a big one, especially during campaign time, they litter, um, our, our roadways, costing DHCD significant time and effort to actually remove them. Um, but the enforcement isn't there. We aren't finding the folks who are putting these big signs on vacant buildings or, in our, um, or in our roadways. Um, and if we were, we could generate a lot of revenue. So, um, you know, have you guys analyzed those types of, uh, revenue collection, uh, I don't know, pathways, I guess, to see where we can, like, strengthen the city's efforts? And one, making sure that we are keeping our, uh, light poles in, in neighborhoods litter-free, but also generating so much needed revenue?
So, I would actually, uh, what you're describing there, I would actually characterize that around enforcement, less so revenue collection, right? Because we can't collect revenue for fines that we don't, that are not being issued, um, you know, either by our Department of, of Housing or by the Transportation Department. Uh, so, um, I know that, so what we're doing as part of some of the revenue initiatives for this year's budget is looking at, um, specific fines, uh, that haven't been increased for many years, and specifically identifying fines associated, uh, with quality of life, sort of these, like, nuisance-type things that impact, um, our neighborhoods as well as, um, businesses. And looking at sort of what those fine structures look like today, to figure out if there's opportunities to, to change those, uh, around deter, you know, aligned with deterring the behavior. But then also looking, uh, coordinating with each of those agencies, uh, to ensure that they have staffing models in place to do the enforcement. Um, and so, that is part of, um, a review that's happening, um, under the leadership of the city administrator, as we look to identify specific fines that would be increased as part of the, the '26 budget. In terms of the, the revenue collection when fines are issued, I'm also going to, um, encourage you to ask that question when we get to the Finance portion of the hearing, because we're joined by the, um, the Bureau Chief for Revenue Collections, Carla Neely.
Thank you, I definitely will, because I think that is one fine, um, that we all can agree in this chamber, in this city, that, uh, we would all cheer for. If we stop seeing, uh, campaign signs and We Buy Houses signs, um, we can keep the Tough Tony signs, but everything else has to go.
For our last question for BBMR is going to be Councilwoman Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, good to see you, Director, and appreciate the work that you guys do. Um, I'd like to follow up on, um, a couple of the lines of questions that, um, some of the members had. Um, it sort of stems off of the overtime piece. Um, we noted at the hearing earlier, uh, a week ago or so, um, that in the fiscal year '25 budget, we budgeted $76 million roughly, uh, for overtime, and that we were projected to spend $144 million, which begged the question for me, um, at what point does BBMR, um, become aware of the overages? How does BBMR, uh, become aware of, of the overages? We'll start with there.
Yeah. Uh, so, we see this stuff primarily in our quarterly forecast. Uh, so when we go through and we'll pull an agency's, um, you know, budget to actual comparison, you know, any sort of higher trends regarding overtime spending is, is going to jump out right away. Uh, where we have agencies, um, that have overtime issues, uh, what we do is there, we're monitoring, uh, their overtime more frequently than just quarterly. So, we're looking at that data, um, every month, so that we can see any sort of spikes or jumps, or if we can see improvement from the, the prior year. Uh, and then partner, coordinating with those, um, city agencies, uh, to have conversations about what they're doing to control spending. Uh, also coordinating with our partners in City Stat, uh, if the overtime issues are happening within a stat-ed agency, uh, coordinating with, uh, that team, so that we can include an overtime topic, uh, as part of the, the stat meetings. We've been able to do that with, um, uh, with the public safety agencies, as well as transportation and wrecking parks in the, in the DOT and the Clean Stat meetings, and we've had really great conversations, um, about what's happening in terms of, um, operationally, what agencies could be doing to slow those overtime numbers.
I appreciate that, thank you. I, um, I'm curious, you know, as we see that trend, um, we have historically struggled with overtime, and I think this is something that'd be great for us as a council to, you know, be a partner in resolving. Um, I'm curious, at what point do you notify the council? Because, you know, eventually we'll have to consider a supplemental, um, but it would be great to know that before the end of the year, and before we are at, at that point nearly double the, uh, initial budget for overtime.
So, again, for the agencies that are projecting deficits this year, you know, I've been flagging that as part of my quarterly projections that I've been bringing to the council since this fall. Uh, so that is our, our practice for notifying you all of those, of those changes. Uh, and I, I think if, if the body wanted a different type of reporting regarding that, uh, we could, we could talk about what you're looking for, or what's missing in terms of how we're reporting that information to you currently.
And, uh, last piece here, and, um, we can move on, but as far as the decision to, you know, once we are now nearly double the budget, um, how do we make the decision to commit to that? Um, is that sort of a negotiation between the Department and Finance, uh, or with the administration? How do we decide we're just going to bite that bullet and swallow the additional costs?
In terms of the overtime spending?
Yes.
Uh, you know, our, our goal here, again, is to minimize overtime wherever we can. Uh, but in, in cases, especially for this fiscal year where we see the highest overtime, it's, uh, in the public safety agencies, as well as, uh, transportation. And a big share of the transportation overtime is coming from snow removal costs from this winter. Uh, so I would say, you know, the discussion about, um, you know, what to turn off in terms of realizing savings from these overtime pieces, that's largely, um, operational decisions that are made by the police and the fire, the police commissioner and the fire chief, uh, in terms of how they're deploying staff resources to meet their minimum daily staffing. Uh, and so, I would, I think those are great questions to bring back to police and fire, uh, in terms of how they're thinking about their budget constraints when they're deploying staff resources through overtime.
Uh, so just understand that, uh, in an instance like that, police would find that within its own budget and find the savings in, in order to account for the additional costs.
So, what we know is that, in the case of police, uh, most of their overtime is vacancy-driven. So, they have, um, high overtime levels because they have to call people back, uh, to accommodate for their daily minimum staffing. Uh, and so, uh, what has happened, sort of, up until fiscal '24, there's been enough vacancy savings in the department that that was all net neutral. What we saw in fiscal '24 was that we sort of, the, the vague, the savings from the vacancy, that was the first year where the savings from the vacancy positions, vacant positions were not enough to offset the overtime costs. And what we've seen in fiscal '25 is that the overtime costs are even higher. A portion of that is driven by the, the new contract for the FOP members. And so, what's happening in police is that the cost of overtime now exceeds, um, savings that they could reallocate from vacant positions. And so, from a, a commissioner perspective, he's sort of faced with this decision, do I scale back service in order to hit a budget number? Or do I continue, um, to provide service at a higher level to meet demands, um, in order to, um, maintain public safety? And those are, you know, those are operational decisions that the, the commissioner is making.
Uh, I, I'll say this and just leave the comment, um, I, I think, you know, too, I think the, what the President alluded to earlier, but, um, you know, the committee discussed, uh, just a week ago, uh, I think it's really important that we try to practice to the best of our ability, uh, honesty in the initial budget. If we don't think that we're going to meet, um, the budget, given some of the practices last year, or vacancies, or need in order to, to meet basic, uh, services for the city, um, it would be wise of us to just account for that in the budget early on, and try to as best as possible right-size, so that we're not doing a significant, uh, supplemental that is essentially the budget to begin with on top of the budget.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, I, I appreciate the, the insight there, and, um, I would encourage you, um, to, you, strongly consider, um, that in our budget now. Um, it's certainly something that I deeply worry about, and I, I know a number of my colleagues share that concern as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Cohen, Council President Cohen, excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to pick up exactly where Councilman Conway left off, and frame it as both a question and a committee request. Earlier on in my line of questioning, you had committed to working with the council to reduce year-end budget supplemental legislation that balances agency budgets retroactively. Um, when, Director, can you send us a proposal that proactively addresses expected agency overspending that will prevent or minimize year-end supplementals?
For fiscal '25 or, um, moving forward for fiscal '26?
Moving forward. What, what I am asking and what I thought there was a commitment to earlier in the line of questioning is, and I think in hearing, some of the, some of this reflected in my colleagues' questioning, that we move away from this practice of leaving the council to approve retroactive year-end supplementals that the money's been spent. Um, what I'm asking for is, when would be a reasonable timeframe to get a proposal, um, on how we could do that?
So, I would want to, um, discuss that with the, the city administrator, in terms of, um, you know, the direction that they, that, that she would like to take. Uh, I think that that is something that we can circle back and have conversation, uh, with, you know, our council partners, uh, after the summer, after we get through, um, the adoption of the '26 budget, and talk about, you know, what should that look like as we go into fiscal '26. So, I would say, you know, we could have those conversations during the course of the month of July and August, so we know sort of the ground rules and expectations going into the quarterly projections for '26.
What I would like to see in this budget cycle is more of a commitment to moving away from this practice. And what I'm looking for right now is, when can we begin to have that conversation, um, and totally understand and appreciate, you know, this has been past practice, and it's been going on for a long time, we've all been here, um, but I, I, I don't want to wait till next budget cycle. When can we engage a conversation with the council about how we can move away from this practice?
And I think what I'm suggesting is that perhaps throughout the course of July and August of this year, we would coordinate, I could help to coordinate meetings between, um, the Mayor's Office, the Council President's Office, uh, and Chairwoman McCray, so that we can align around expectations, around everyone's expectations for that process as we go into fiscal '26 in advance of the first quarter projection.
I appreciate that. I would like to see a little more clarity between now and when we sign, when, when we agree on this budget, um, of what that process could look like.
Okay, I can work with the city administrator, uh, to, you know, discuss, um, different options that we could put on the table.
Madam Chair and, and Mr. President, I think what we're hearing is that it's, it's just going to be difficult for the administration to be able to, to undertake that level of, of action in the next month, given everything that we have going on. I think that when we talk about these supplementals, and we talk about this overtime piece, we got to remember that there are real services, there's real public safety, there's real lives being saved with this overtime. So, there's a, there's a real conversation that's more robust, that I think we need to have them to try to rush it, and I think that's what you're hearing from the budget director.
No, Mr. Chief Staff, I, I, I am fully aware and appreciate that overtime contributes to service delivery, um, particularly in public safety agencies. And I would also say that it is not best practice, and that the piece I am particularly concerned about in this conversation is the year-over-year supplementals that the council is asked to retroactively support, um, after money has already been spent. And I think for this body, uh, part of our duty as council people is fiscal stewardship and fiscal responsibility. And so, understand, and I agree with you in terms of the gravity of this conversation, and do not want to rush or, uh, you know, in any way do any harm to service delivery. I think service delivery is critically important, um, but I think what you are hearing increasingly from the council is a frustration with a practice that puts us in a position where we are forced to sign off on supplementals that we did not agree to on the front end as we negotiate budget. And so, what I'm looking for in this conversation is some kind of commitment, and I thought I'd, I, I think I had heard it in my initial questioning, to move toward a different posture as it relates specifically to this question of retroactive supplemental budgets.
And I think in that conversation, and, and why I would like to just spend a little time thinking about this, is there's a balance, right? Because if you, I, we don't, we still want there to be an accountability in place that if you're trending over, that you're doing things, um, that as an agency director, you're doing things to control your spending, and that there's not this, like, just automatic blank check to get supplementals. And so, what I would like to spend some time thinking about, um, before, so that we can sit down and look at different options, is like, how do we sort of walk the, the balance beam of not taking away that accountability for our agency partners, but then also making this more of an iterative process throughout the fiscal year? I just have to think about that a little bit more to figure out, like, what makes the most sense.
Understood. Let's check back in toward the end of this week, next week, and talk offline about it.
Understood.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're going to move into Finance's, um, Department of Finance's presentation at this time.
All right, good mo, good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Council President, Councilmembers. Just, uh, going to wait for the slides to come up, thank you so much. All right, good morning. Uh, my name's Michael Moxton, I am the city's Chief Financial Officer and the Director of the Department of Finance. Uh, with me today are Joanna Moises, Deputy Finance Director for Operations, and Robert Sennemy, Deputy Finance Director for Fiscal Strategy, along with the chiefs of the bureaus and offices making up the Department of Finance. Uh, you heard testimony earlier today from Laura Larson, the city's Budget Director and Chief of the Bureau of Budget Management and Research within the Department of Finance. With us also are Carla Neely, Chief of the Bureau of Revenue Collections, uh, Adam Manning, uh, the city's Chief Procurement Officer and Chief of the Bureau of Procurement, Danielle Tillman, Acting Chief of the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services, Janelle Rogers, the city's Treasurer and Chief of the Bureau of Treasury Management, uh, Sean K. Stanley, uh, Acting Chief of the Bureau of Risk Management, uh, Joanna Colado, uh, Head of the Fiscal Integrity Office, and Ashley Meyer, Head of the Grants Management Office. Like other agencies, our budget is organized by service area. Uh, most of our bureaus correspond to a single service with a couple of exceptions. The, uh, Services of Procurement, uh, Surplus Property Disposal and Printing roll up to the Bureau of Procurement, while the Accounting Service and the Payroll Service roll up to the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll. Uh, the, uh, mission of the, I'm actually going to stay on the, on this slide for a second, sorry. The mission of the Department of Finance is to provide a full range of services to serve. city agencies, collect and invest all monies due to the city, manage city debt, develop and implement the annual operating budget, manage the city's self-insurance programs, maintain the city's financial records, and execute fiscal policy as established by the Board of Estimates. Looking to the 2026 fiscal year, our goals as a department are threefold. First, we will ensure accurate, reliable, and timely processing of all financial transactions involving the city of Baltimore. Second, we'll provide courteous and responsive customer service to all members of the public who have dealings with the city. And third, we will meet the moment in the face of economic uncertainty and drive fiscal innovation to move the city beyond its existing fiscal constraints using new approaches, legal frameworks, and emerging technologies. The 2026 budget for the Department of Finance also includes some reductions. These avoid any cuts to service levels that would be felt by Baltimoreans and follow the general principle of moving from consultants to in-house staff where possible to build up our own expertise while saving money for the city. You'll see these savings as well as our three core goals interwoven into the budgets and operations of our bureaus, which I will now walk you through. Uh, we begin our review with the Bureau of Revenue Collection. At sixteen million dollars and one hundred thirty-six staff, this is by far our largest bureau, making up nearly half of the agency budget. The service is responsible for collecting all of the taxes, fines, and fees that ultimately let us run our city. It's also our most public-facing service, and I'm happy to report that since we reopened from the pandemic and replaced our staff losses, call center wait times have stayed low and on target. Moreover, we were able to work down multi-month backlogs in lien processing and property transfer and recordation, as well as more recently nearly eliminate what had been a multi-year backlog in refunds. The twenty-six budget for this service includes an in-housing of IT positions, a rightsizing of the bureau's overtime budget, and a consolidation of the refunds function which had previously been split between revenue collection and accounting. Next, we turn to treasury. The city has taken advantage of historically high interest rates over the past few years by generating a strong investment return on our cash portfolio, which has been providing some much-needed relief to our overall budget. Market volatility is outside of our control and we're very careful in what we assume. However, we've been proactive in our investment strategy, which included updating the city's investment policy with the Board of Finance last August for the first time in decades to give us more flexibility on calibrating the types and maturity dates of our investment instruments in line with state and national best practices. On the borrowing side, our general obligation credit rating remains double A with a stable outlook with both credit rating agencies. We're gearing up for a new general obligation issuance this summer. Uh, the administration service, uh, supports the rest of the department in this budget. We're breaking out grants management as well as corporate revenue compliance into their own services without changing staff or funding levels. Given the importance, the work that these areas do for the city's overall fiscal strength, we believed it was important to track them separately. Uh, the area of procurement has been undergoing a historic transformation. In just the past year, pending requests sitting with the, the bureau have fallen by fifty-one percent, and that means that contracts are being registered faster. It ultimately means that vendors can get paid faster. We achieved this through hiring up, restructuring our teams to better align with the work, professionalizing the staff with national certifications, leading numerous citywide trainings with hundreds of participants, and making extensive use of technology to digitize paper processes. The efficiency gains we're seeing so far are just the beginning, and in the coming year, we'll be bringing a slate of proposed revisions to the city code as well as amendments to the city charter to align with the city, the city's toolkit with national best practices. The FY twenty-six budget includes the creation of a specialized team to fo, focus specifically on DPW procurements, as well as the small savings from the removal of a legacy system. The surplus property disposal team ensures the timely auctioning of city assets that are no longer in use, bringing in a steady source of revenue for the general fund. There are no changes to this area in FY twenty-six. The, uh, the, uh, printing, uh, printing services provides a professional print shop for all agencies. There are no changes to this area in FY twenty-six. Uh, the payroll service has seen significant stabilization and strengthening over the past year. After filling our vacancies and training up the team, we've been able to work with our union colleagues to put a final resolution on old issues from the workday transition and do some deep dives with agencies to help them work through their backlogs of payroll transactions. The budget reflects the final balance between the team of experts we've built in-house and the remaining processing tasks that it's more cost-effective to contract out. The area of accounting has unfortunately seen some challenges over the past year. Accounting positions have historically been the most difficult to fill within the Department of Finance due to direct competition with the private sector and a national shortage in the accounting profession. However, the silver lining of recent disturbances in the federal workforce is a flood of new candidates, and we've quickly moved to take advantage. In just the last few weeks, we've screened dozens of qualified candidates through first-round interviews. The 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Review, or the ACFR, and the 2024 Federal Single Audit were both published earlier this month in May. That is a slight improvement on the twenty-three ACFR, which was published last June, and the twenty-three Single Audit, which was published last September. The latest Single Audit also removed four of the previous year's findings, which is a positive indication that the city continues to move in the right direction. With that said, the publication was still behind schedule, which is not where we like to be. Once the team is at full strength, the bureau will work in close coordination with myself and the city administrator's office to devise and implement a strategic plan that gets us to timely publications for the coming fiscal cycle. The 2026 budget adjustments for the service area are technical in nature. The Bureau of Risk Management ensures that policies, procedures, and trainings are well executed around the city to keep all of our workers and residents safe. In the past year, we've ramped up our coordination efforts, supporting the city administrator's office in a citywide push to share data between agencies and identify risk factors. There are no changes to the budget for FY twenty-six. Uh, the Fiscal Integrity Office oversees the implementation of tax credits and ensures that all rules and regulations are applied fairly and equally to all who apply. The FY twenty-six budget includes funds for maintenance and upgrades to support the online tax credit system. The Finance Project Management Office provides technical assistance, uh, reporting functionality for all software systems used by the Department of Finance. The FY twenty-six budget inhouses contractual spending by creating four-agency IT specialist positions to take on the duties previously performed by consultants, saving the city a net five hundred forty thousand dollars in the process. The Grants Management Office, which is newly broken out as a separate service, oversees all grant activities in the city and develops standard operating procedures and guidelines to ensure grant management best practice. This office has been expanding its role within the city, convening agencies for working groups and deep dives on shared problems, conducting trainings, and completing a citywide assessment of our grants practice. In the coming year, we'll be offering more monitoring, guidance, and support as grants management works in conjunction with the city administrator's office and our agency partners towards the removal of single audit findings. And lastly, corporate and revenue compliance, which is also newly broken out as a separate service, ensures that large companies operating within the city of Baltimore don't fall behind on their obligations to the city. Their work has already recovered millions of dollars and ensures that our corporate partners stay true to their agreements so that every taxpayer dollar owed fairly under the law can be collected from those who owe it. And with that, I'll be happy to take your questions.
We're gonna start with Councilmember Gray.
Uh, thank you. First, I wanna start with, uh, praise and uplift, um, the print shop. My chief of staff, Kimmy, uh, has nothing but great things to say over and over and over again about you guys, especially working with, uh, Steve and Tracy. Um, and, um, just, you guys are always great last-minute things, uh, and just, um, anything that's really tech, technical in nature, um, they're always there to assist. So I just wanted to give a public shout-out to the print shop.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Wanted to talk about procurement. Um, and our cities, um, we seem to consistently fall short of, uh, of our goal to deliver, um, just anything in a, uh, in a, in a quick manner. And so, um, whether it's DOT and waiting six or seven months for replacement of a flex post, or ten months with DPW, uh, or Parks and Rec waiting for five months, and a lot of these things, time and time again, seem like they're low-hanging fruit. Um, things that, you know, from a community aspect, when we go to these community meetings, um, if we can't do those little things, like they just, the, the trust for what government can deliver just plummets each and every time. Um, and so my question is, uh, could you please explain what's going on? Uh, what ongoing steps are you guys taking to correct the extremely frustrating barriers that we have in real time when it comes to procurement?
Absolutely, and thank you for the question. Um, procurement was for many years a sore spot for Baltimore City. Um, we, uh, were just slow, and the reasons for that were, uh, many. We didn't have enough people and we had a lot of rules that got in our own way. A few years ago, we began looking at the problem. We looked at what other cities did and we, uh, responded. We brought in new leadership, we started implementing a plan, and what I'm very happy to report on is that in the past year, we've seen really, really positive change. Uh, to put a, put it mildly, things have sped up, and that is really exciting because that's the first positive change we've seen in the city in a really long time, and we're actually seeing it in practice. We're seeing those backlogs fall in real time on our charts. Now, some of that is happening just in the last few months, and so it'll take a little bit of time to work through agency by agency, contract by contract, but you're gonna see that in real time in the next year, and you're gonna see that accelerate. And with that, I'm gonna pass it over to our procurement chief, Adam Manny, to tell you a little bit more about the procurement transformation.
Good morning. Thank you, Councilman, for the question. Uh, in the Bureau of Procurement, some of the things that we have been working with is realigning our processes to gather efficiencies and also the increase in staff and moving into a teams-based environment. In the past, based upon the procurement, it would go to almost anybody. Now we have a team of procurement officers that are assigned to support specific departments. This allows the procurement officers to learn the business cycles of the departments. It also gives the departments a single point, point of contact to go back to. Each team is composed, comprised of a procurement manager, procurement officer twos, procurement officer ones, so that they can move forward. Other changes that we've been making are in technology and efficiencies, and that is bringing our, some of our business partners to the beginning of the procurement cycle, not at the end. So now, as we move forward with it, we have both our business partners with the Small Minority Business Office and the Wage Commission in the beginning of the procurement cycle, not at the end. In the past, what has happened is you would put in a requisition, it would come to procurement, we would do our job, and then we would send it out to these other departments so that they could do their jobs. And at times, we would have questions from SMB or Wage and Labor. Now they're at the beginning, so by the time that requisition actually gets to the procurement office, that we can then just continue along and move through the procurement cycle. We've also changed where BBMR is now being brought into that procurement cycle at the beginning also, and that they will be reviewing items with a twenty-five thousand dollar or above value. In the past, that was a much higher number, but based with conversations with them, so we can ensure that we are following the budget and moving forward. The other changes we've been doing is our staff has been moving through to get certified. Uh, everybody in the bureau now has or is working on an independent learning plan so that they can have and earn their national certifications. We have two or three people who will be testing in the fall at the next time that they do it. We've been working with our business partners, with the, uh, National Association of State Procurement Officers to help with some of the training. They offer a variety of free trainings that we've been taking, uh, advantage of to go along with it. Uh, one of the tools that we've brought on is a project management software system where every procurement that comes in is entered into it by the procurement officer so we can track where it is, when we received it, who's working on it, have communications that are going through it, and it also helps us understand so that I personally look in it on a daily basis and send an email or within the system saying, this has been sitting for two months, where is it, what are we doing, and that we can move forward. Uh, in the past, the procurement officers were heavily burdened. Uh, we had at one point at the end of twenty-three, a procurement officer who had a hundred and fifty procurements sitting waiting for him to do it. I've been challenged to get that number to twenty, and we are getting closer and closer to that as we bring on staff and we go through training. So we are moving for a lot of change going on, uh, and we've seen these numbers drop dramatically as during the, uh, procurement transformation update to the Board of Estimates, we were showing that those numbers had really dropped from where they were, and we're continuing to move forward with it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, just because we, we've had issues with, um, I know, uh, that the CAO's office is probably tired of hearing this, but, um, there's a flashing light that, uh, that we are just fighting for on Frederick Avenue. Um, and it's in response to, um, the historic floods that happened in Elkhart City, but, you know, more, more dear to Alheart and Arlington and my district, uh, one of the things that we were promised was a flashing light, a flashing signal, um, so it can stop, uh, motorists on either direction from coming into, um, the low point, and just every time we ran into a hurdle, it was procurement, 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 and it gets frustrating for us, it gets frustrating for the neighborhood. So I am excited about you guys moving forward, um, and improving that process. Another question I had was for the finance grant management. Um, I'm excited to see the establishment of the office as long overdue for the city to streamline these vital grants, um, that support the work, uh, of the agencies and mayoral offices. Can you tell us a little bit about logistics of how this office will work with our agencies and mayoral offices? And, um, how will you work directly with these agencies to apply, implement, and manage grants?
Absolutely. Uh, we're, uh, we're going to be, uh, providing essentially, uh, uh, an extra layer of, uh, policy guidance, training, and support. Uh, we're going to, uh, build on work that we've already done in the past to sort of coach the agencies through the process and, and add to that, uh, a, a level of review that it varies agency by agency. Uh, obviously, some agencies are, uh, very grant-heavy and other agencies only have a small handful of grants, but as we go through that review process, we're kind of identifying, uh, uh, tailor-made approaches for each agency. Uh, with that, I'll pass it to our new grants director, Ashley Meyer.
Thank you, uh, Councilman. To, uh, expand upon what Director Moxton said, um, I like to think about our Grants Management Office as air traffic control for grants in the city. So our job is not to manage the day-to-day actions of each grant that we have, but to help agencies do a better job in managing their grants and know where to go to get the support. I think my understanding historically is that grants management has been very, um, agency by agency. There hasn't been a central repository for where people can go to get a better understanding of what they're supposed to do to follow city policy with grants. How, you know, what are the best practices, generally speaking, to manage a grant? And so what my team and I are doing is we are making sure that we position ourselves as the resource center for agencies managing grants. They know that they can come to GMO at any time and say, I have a grant, I have a new grant staffer, what do we do? Um, we are continually working on resources such as business process maps, we are working on a handbook, um, that actually lays out from, you know, start to finish what an agency should be doing to manage their grants. We offer monthly trainings and monthly working sessions to actually triage the issues that people are having. Um, and then additionally, we do a lot of one-to-one support. Every agency is very different in terms of their grant portfolio, the agency makeup. Um, some of the mayoral offices have smaller staff, some of, you know, housing, health have very robust grant staff, so their issues are different. Um, and so they have, you know, gotten into a cadence of reaching out to us with specific issues and saying, I have a challenge here, um, I need some support here, and we've been able to just sort of hold hands and walk people through the process.
Thank you for that. Um, and so will there be like just, uh, like one person assigned to like a specific, uh, agency and mayoral office? Like, I, I just wanna know just like how, how's this gonna work? Like, is there, will there be a point of contact, a go-to person for particular agencies or offices, or will there just be one person that's gonna be the go-to person, um, for the one-stop-shop of resources?
So right now, we are a team of four. Um, we are not a very big team. So what we have tried to do is work on a portfolio approach. So what we have tried to do is work on a portfolio approach where each team member has sort of an informal portfolio of agencies. But, you know, I wanna be clear that that is a challenge right now just because there are so many agencies, and some of them are very grant-heavy and some are not. So, you know, ideally, we will expand our team over time to have a lot more grant managers available for each agency. But as of right now, I think we're trying to figure out exactly what the portfolios look like and exactly what is the best way to structure that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gray. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanna give a big shout out to Chief Neely, Ms. Turner, Mr. Scrivner for your help during tax sale season. We inundated you with questions and asked for your support to help our constituents. We're seeing overall, you know, less, fewer accounting issues, but I know that, you know, when residents are calling us during tax sale season, they're very distressed. And so I just really appreciate you and your team helping out. Thank you so much for that. And please pass along to your folks, because I think I speak for the council, that we all appreciate all that you've done. With that, I know you're anticipating this question, so I'm really hoping you have the answer. We, last budget season, we had talked about the implementation of the new tax payment system, and that that is an important component of the work ahead in terms of not only more accurate reporting and better accounting, but we really need payment plans. And that that was one of the first things that would come from the new payment plan system. Last year at this time, there was a commitment to fulfill the payment plans for our residents. And again, it's important, not only for the people that we've taken out of the tax sale, but for residents who, because they don't have a mortgage, right? It'll be easier to pay as you go as opposed to, you know, every six months. And we wanna make sure that this is easier to pay their bills rather than harder. The commitment was to have payment plans by October of 2025. And I'm understanding that that is not gonna be the case. I'm wondering if there can be a new commitment of a timeframe or what we are looking at in that regard.
Thank you for the question, Councilwoman Ramos. We understand the importance. Since last year and really earlier, we have been working as hard as we can to deliver this new tax system because the point is to deliver customer service. The point is to help people figure out their taxes. And the point is for those people who are in a difficult situation to help them dig their way out. And that absolutely includes payment plans. And that is why we have put payment plans at the top in the first part of what will be staged release for this tax system. And we are doing everything in our power to get this tax system rolled out right. Now, with that being said, we have to get it right. This is people's taxes, this is people's homes, and it has to be done right. And that is why we were being very, very thoughtful about the dates that we say because any date that rolls out of my mouth is just a word. The reality is getting it right. So we're taking it day by day. We've been building since the last time we spoke, since the last time I testified a year ago and since the last time I spoke to you and just the last time that we spoke, whatever it was a few weeks ago. We're moving, we're progressing, but we don't want to get ahead of the testing. We don't want to get ahead of the data conversion. This has to be perfect when it goes out. It's just too important. So we're going to keep reporting out to you. We're gonna keep progressing and moving and building the system. We will get it out the door as soon as we possibly can with the caveat that it is right on day one.
Well, I appreciate that. I understand the balance of managing expectations. That is actually half our job. Do you know that? And so I understand that. My pushing on this is to understand the sense of urgency here to get this done. You know, given the disaster with the permit office, that they did not take the amount of necessary time, I get where you're coming from on making sure that the payment plan works and that the payment system works. So I just am gonna continue to push because also then we have to have that component of reaching out to our residents once we are anticipating payment plans so that we can make sure that they're either getting on to the homeowner's property tax credit or getting on the payment plan. So we have to move all of that together. And so I'm hopeful that at least we can commit to continuing to work together on this so that it's done right, and hopefully within the next year, two? We at least can have a sense of when this is happening along with this coupling of whether it's the SOS Fund or whether it's another service that's actually gonna be able to, because you all are, you know, are spreadsheet and accounting people, and that is really important. We need the folks on the ground to really reach out to our residents to be able to get them onto payment plans. So I just wanna make sure that the entire system is put together and not just the technology.
Of course, of course. And I can certainly commit to a thoughtful communications plan that will absolutely include the council. I think it's very important that we communicate to our residents that this is coming, that payment plans are coming, that a new tax system is coming, and the implications for that, and of course, the implications for what it means for tax sales. So we will work very closely with you as we get ready for this and get ready for the rollout.
Thank you. And then the shorter question that I had for this round is what I was asking before about the impact of the state's bond rating on our bond rating or our performance. I don't know who has that answer.
Well, I'll start it off, and then I'll pass it to our Treasury Chief. We are double A staple. Our bond rating is separate from the state's. And our bond rating has always been stabilized by the city's strong reserves, which it is our policy to gradually add to over time. And we have continued to do that, including in this budget. We will, of course, continue to closely monitor the situation, but we are still double A staple. And Chief Rogers, anything to add?
Good afternoon, good morning, and thank you for your question. So just so you know, that we are going through the bond issue process for the general obligation bond scheduled to be issued in the summer of this year. And in our working group, we have addressed the uncertainty of this time and how we're gonna present our story to the rating agencies and how we're gonna address the implications of the loss of federal jobs as well as any potential impact to revenue to the city. So we'll be working closely with our Budget Department to be able to give that story, the narrative, to the rating agencies to put the city in a position where the agency is comfortable with the city having a contingency plan in place to address these uncertain times.
Is that the reason why the Maryland's bond rating went down a little bit? Because of all of the uncertainty? And is that gonna impact us?
I think some of it was the revenue projections as well. So like I said, we were working with budgets to ensure that any impact that we have, we do have some mitigating adjustments, budget adjustments in place.
But you don't see the state's bond rating decline affecting us?
I don't think so.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Porter? Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Director, I had a quick question about the distinction between the project management software that you just mentioned and Workday. So can you explain the difference between the two? You mentioned that you all are utilizing a project management software.
I'm sorry, could you clarify the?
Yeah, so in your presentation, you mentioned a project management software that you are, that you all are bringing online.
The procurement software. I'll pass it over to the procurement chief. Go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you for the question, Councilwoman Porter. In procurement, one of the things we found as we were going through the transformation is we didn't have a system to keep ourselves organized. And so to make ourselves organized, what we did is we looked at a couple of different systems. We are using now what's known as Monday.com. This allows us to customize or configure that's gonna be best for procurement for the entire staff to use. Workday, while a very powerful system, doesn't necessarily give us all the data points that we need as we continue with the transformation. And so by using Monday, we have the ability to go in and set it up so that we can track the information we need and so we can look back, run reports, do dashboards, and see exactly where things are in real time and do that communication. So that's what we are using internally to keep ourselves organized with every purchase order, every requisition that comes through so that we can actually track and then continue with the transformation.
So thank you for that response. One of the benefits of Workday, when it was presented to the council, was aligning silo data across multiple systems that make it difficult for leaders to make decisions intelligently and quickly. And so that's actually, I just read that from the Workday website. So how are you all, I'm having a hard time understanding the need of Monday.com if Workday provides those types of project management and tracking services within the service themselves?
Workday, while a very powerful system, is, it's a wonderful human capital management system. As a financial system, it still has some growing pains that it's going through. To navigate that and get the information that we require in the manner that we require it does take a little more time than what's going on for live, what we need. There are processes that, when Workday was initially set up, that I would say were not set up to best practices, and we are now in the process of trying to correct those. Example being, as I mentioned, bringing our business partners in at the beginning of the procurement cycle, not at the end. Moving a lot of our manual forms into the system itself so that they're now electronic to get efficiencies. It doesn't give us exactly what we need when we need it. The nice thing with Monday.com is I get an email or a phone call saying, can you tell me about this RQ? In Workday, it will just tell me that it's in process. By using Monday.com, the way we've set it up is I can see who's exactly working on it, where it is in the process, what they've done with it, and the comments that they put in, such as, we sent this back to the department for more information. Or it's with the supervisor for signature. That allows me to go a lot faster. So when I get these questions on where a PO is or where solicitation is, I can go into Monday, the procurement officer has put in all the relevant information, they've even attached files. Workday doesn't allow you to put those comments in as quickly and easily to be seen.
And as a follow-up question, do we have a consultant that we've been consulting? I mean, do we have a consultant that we've been working with at Workday to answer these questions that you're talking about?
With Workday, we did do a health check with them. It was part of the contract renewal. And we did do a deep dive where we've located and identified some areas that can be improved, and that's what we have been working on now. There are areas in Workday that I wouldn't say meet the way the city does business that we need to change, but it's very difficult working with them. Workday did stand up a group for public sector for us to have conversations with. I am a member of that group when it meets. But it's a give-and-go with it.
That's right. And I'll just add to that, that we make these decisions with a very citywide frame of mind, and we don't make them lightly. There are, most of the time, a lot of advantages to being on one system. That's a one-stop-shop. There are, on occasion, advantages to having a supplemental system if it's something that is very inexpensive, that's very just easy to do on the side, that kind of gets something done quickly. At the end of the day, Workday gave us a lot of advantages as a city to consolidate all of our processes. And after a transition period, we're reaping a lot of those rewards. But my allegiance is not to Workday, it's to the city of Baltimore. So whatever gives us the best result, after being very thoughtful about it and looking at it from a citywide perspective, we're gonna always try to do the most effective thing. And in this case, it was this very inexpensive add-on to be a little bit more effective.
Thank you for that, Director. And while I understand that it's inexpensive, my issue is the continuity of data between the agencies, not only between the agencies of Monday.com, but also within Workday. If we are tracking our procurement mechanisms through Workday, how is that connected to Monday.com? Monday.com and other project management software like Asana, like Slack, are open systems, whereas Workday is a password-protected system, whereas city employees can enter it as well.
Thank you, ma'am. All the work is being done in Workday. Everything is, every procurement, every solicitation, every requisition, every purchase order flows through Workday in the secure system. We are using Monday.com as a tool to keep ourselves organized, to give us greater visibility of items that we can't necessarily easily pull out of Workday. For example, when did the requisition come into the procurement queue? Workday tracks when it was entered in the system, not necessarily when it hit procurement. So that allows me then to see how long it's been sitting in my shop, what we need to do, and why there might be delays, which was the big question on what's going on. Was it a question to the vendor? Are we in negotiations? Are we doing something? Monday is a supplement to Workday. It's not what we're doing our business in. All the business is done in Workday. It's a separate item that my staff are using now to keep themselves organized and allow myself, the directors, a higher-level view of everything that's going on, which we can't necessarily pull from Workday in an immediate fashion.
So are we to assume that the Monday.com or any project management software that you're using would limit the bottlenecks and inefficiencies that we're seeing within your office?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question, please?
No worries. So with the use of Monday.com and different project management softwares, are we to assume that use of those software would limit the inefficiencies and bottlenecks that we're seeing within your office?
Yes. It's allowing us to pivot a lot faster to see where items are. And like I said, an example is, in real time, when somebody asks me where a requisition is, I can search from the requisition by the department, by the procurement officer, by a search, see what they've said, see where it is, see what's going on, and then make that immediate response and put a comment into that line to the procurement officer, asking them for updates and information. And my staff, they're required to keep Monday.com open at all times. In the past, what I'd have to do is pick up the phone and call somebody or email somebody, ask for information, because certain things, Workday is capturing the information, but it's not capturing the qualitative information that we need, such as it's been sent back because we need a signature or the wrong form was attached, or that the document is out at the business partner for signature, for a contract, so we can bring it before the board. Workday doesn't capture that information. This allows us to capture that quantitative, qualitative data, which goes forward. It's, again, it's not supplementing Workday. It's just there to help us keep ourselves organized, know what we're doing.
Yeah, and I definitely, I hear you. And I'm all for organization, all for collaboration. But I wanna make sure that, one, we are really addressing the issue with existing systems that we are paying for. Workday has been having these hiccups for at least a year, year and a half. And so I wanna make sure that if we are utilizing services that we are paying for, we're paying a pretty penny for, I wanna make sure that they are being used in a way. And if they're not being used in a way, then we have that conversation to see what can, what system can be used in order for our agencies not only to collaborate, but to track issues, to track where things are in the process, and also making sure that we communicate and collaborate as well within the agencies.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. We're gonna go to Councilmember Blanchard. Before we do, please limit any follow-up questions to one question. Councilwoman Blanchard?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. So talking about bids and the challenge we've had with getting enough bids for our formal solicitations in FY '24, we, I think, was averaging out about two bids. The target is five. Can we just talk through, and we have Can we just talk through, and we had, like, for example, in my district, Robert C. Marshall Field up on Pennsylvania Avenue has, only got one, and it was, it came in at an uncompetitive, well over a reasonable cost price. What's the, kind of, what's leading to this challenge, and then what are we doing about it?
Oh, that's Chief Annie. Thank you, sir. There are several challenges when it comes to putting it out. When we issue, the Bureau of Procurement, for this is, this is non-capital, non-professional services, we put it out on our website. It's through Workday. We also put it on the state system, the EMIS system. We advertise in three different newspapers. Part of the reason that sometimes it was hard is the city, in the past, there were issues with payment. People didn't want to do business with the city. That's now changed, our business partners, and it's part of the culture change that we've been putting through. Some of it is with the city restrictions that are in, with small minority businesses, which we are 100% with that program, please don't get me wrong, but sometimes a business will look at it and maybe decide not to. So there's a number of different reasons. It could also be that we haven't picked the right category code, that we've reached out. We try and pull what the category code is and then send that to our business partners that are in Workday automatically. So we are working on it. We do look at it. It's also, depending upon the time and the economy, it can change. People might have flush with jobs and they're not looking for some. Some might be, it depends upon what the market is. I can't give you an overall answer on everything. It really needs to be focused in on which it might be.
Okay. Thank you for that follow-up. Do we project that the improvements with the procurement process, like, are we seeing meaningful improvement here? And what else are we doing to help reach the target number of bids?
Yes, sir. We do see that we are getting bids. We are getting better questions that are being asked. The staff is moving to, as we've been, traditionally, we've done a bid, an invitation for bid, the IFB, where it's low price. The council, the Board of Estimates, have been pushing us to move to a best value solicitation, which is a request for proposal. We've been issuing more and more of those. Now, that process takes longer, but it's not just price is a factor, but it's not the overriding factor. So it changes the dynamics, and we get more items in, so we can review, and there's an entire process based upon what we've put out and how we're scoring it. So we are seeing an uptick in those responses and the requests for proposals as we've changed from just the IFB method.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Got a couple of questions. I'll start with a question about payroll. I was looking at the performance measures for payroll over the last few years, and looking specifically at the number of off-cycle checks, which I believe has always been an indicator of our accuracy and our ability to pay employees on time. In fiscal year 2021, we had 10,000 roughly off-cycle checks. In '22, we had 33,000. I believe that was around the time that we rolled out Workday and had a couple of issues to work out there. It looks like we got a hold of it in 2023 and got it down again to 15,000. In '24, though, we bumped back up to 35,000. And '25, we had a target of 15,000. We don't have the actual '25 numbers, and we're now targeting 30,000 off-cycle paychecks for '26. What's going on here?
And thank you so much for the question and the good eye. There's actually a really interesting story there. So, yes, traditionally, we used off-cycle checks as kind of crude measure for how things are going. What we realized last year is, as we got deeper into a payroll cleanup, and as we basically cleaned up old issues with payroll, we were actually issuing more off-cycle checks as basically that cleanup. The off-cycle checks were kind of the healing process. In a year where things were getting addressed more quickly, we actually started seeing a lot more off-cycle checks, because that's what the normal process really looked like, is when somebody just has an adjustment, when somebody got a promotion, when somebody got a retro that was due to them for any number of reasons, that generates an off-cycle check. And that's not a sign of a problem. That is a normal process that's supposed to happen. We never really fully grasped that, because we never had a clean process until this year. And I think that this number of off-cycle checks is actually a pretty good new normal for us to start tracking. So we're gonna think through for next year of what some better measures might be for what signs of a problem really are. But we're starting to better understand that off-cycle checks really are just a sign of good processing of retros. Do you want to add anything to that?
I mean, I think the director was a payroll expert with that response. I'll just add, we also changed our thinking on off-cycles. So I think in the past, we used it as a measure to indicate if there is an off-cycle, something bad has happened. And just to expound on the director's comments, we have many retro calculations that are for good things, right? So salary increases, contracts that are signed, labor contracts with a retroactive date, those are going to result in one of two things. We could issue it on the next on-cycle payment that the employee is expected to receive, so their regular pay date, but where possible, we change that to do off-cycles. We do that for the convenience of the employee, and at many times, at the request of the unions for more visibility on that separate amount. And so that's a positive thing. We're able to more nimbly process those in ways that don't disrupt regular payroll processing.
Exactly. So I do acknowledge it's kind of a messy target, and I can commit to cleaning that up for next year.
Yeah, I think the explanation is super helpful. I think what I would like to see, given the real reason for, or the initial reason for having off-cycle checks be a performance measure, is figure out some way for us to identify when there are problems. If off-cycle checks are no longer that bellwether, I certainly want to figure out a better way to do that. And we know we've had issues with folks between HR and finance not getting paid the right amount, or not getting their promotion, or things like that. And off-cycle checks have helped us identify some of those issues in the past, so we can look back and figure out how to address it.
Absolutely. We'll work to figure out a more effective measure at really, really getting at true problems.
I'd like to make that a formal request, just to look at this performance measure and update it so that we find some better way to identify when there are issues with paychecks.
Yes, sir.
My second question, forgive me, has to do with purchasing, procurement. And so I think one of the things we all know is, pretty common in procurement is, oh, thank I was looking at the performance measures that we have here, and one thing we don't have a strong sense of is how often change orders become a factor, and how much those change orders can dramatically change the outcome of initial procurement effort. And so I thought that would be a really interesting bellwether to tell us how things actually play out. We know that when we put out an RFP, we get those bids back, we choose someone, the number that we actually end up paying for that project can balloon significantly over the course of the project. And so I'm really curious if there's a way for us to capture that and maybe use that as a future bellwether for our procurement processes.
All right. I'll pass it to Chief Annie.
Thank you for the question, sir. We currently do not track change orders in whole that way. In the Bureau of Procurement, the change orders that we get the majority of times are requests for price increases at times of contract renewal, where it's tied back to CPIU, Consumer Price Index Urban. That's brought forward with everything, and then it goes to the Board of Estimates for the renewal and the cost increase. Changes, change orders in projects do happen, specifically mostly in construction, where it is part of the normal business process, large IT projects, you would see it, and some other individual projects. Those change orders are captured, and in the Workday system as they're moving forward, and depending upon the value and the time, it could, a lot of them are brought back to the Board of Estimates for approval. If it's a change order adding time or deleting time, or they've come across hazardous materials or something else, that is brought back to the Board of Estimates. But we don't track the change orders as a whole. They're traditionally tracked per project, and if it was a specific project, you would go in and look and see what the original was, what the change order was. Anything that's worth saying is worth putting in writing. So even if it's a decrease in time, or there's no money involved, there should be a change order capturing that. But we don't capture everything all along.
Is there anything preventing us from doing so?
The answer is no, but I would have to make sure that, see if the technology could do that, if we could capture a change order across the board. That would have to go into the Change Committee for Workday to see if we can actually, if the system will allow us to do that, have the ability to do that.
Sure. If at all possible, I would make an additional request here, that we add change orders as one of the performance metrics for the procurement process. I think it's indicative, even for agencies, how well they sort of craft their RFP and how well they manage those processes. And so I think it's a real opportunity for us to not overspend. Madam Vice President talked a little bit about contracting things out. It can be incredibly expensive to the tune of sometimes, you know, half or sometimes more of the initial price of the RFP, and I think we just want to make sure that we keep a cap on that. Madam Chair, is it okay if I make a couple, one request that is not associated with this particularly, but is broadly for the hearing?
Is this a committee request?
This is a committee request, yes.
Okay, what is your request?
The request, one of the things that we normally get with the budget process is an updated org chart for all agencies, as well as contact information, and not just emails and office numbers, but mobile numbers, so your city cells, so that if members need to reach out to folks, we know who we're reaching out to. I want to make a request to the administration that be provided to us before the end of the budget hearings.
All right, the law, so was that information already sent out?
It was. So we discussed the org chart formats with Chairwoman McCray, and the org charts that were submitted for all the agencies provide the primary contact for every service within every agency that has been called for a hearing, as well as the agency leadership team. So the agency director, any deputy directors, their chief fiscal officer, as well as their primary legislative contact. And there's names and phone numbers for all of those roles for every city agency.
Councilman Conway, can you work with council services to provide you maybe with the date that that information was released?
I will do that, and I'll also talk with the director after, just because what I saw here was not exactly what I was looking for, but maybe there's more to it that I'm not aware of.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
No problem. Councilman Jones.
Yes, I just want to briefly follow up on Councilman Conway's question a little bit regarding the change orders. While, I guess, change orders aren't being tracked, I guess another follow-up question is, are there guardrails in place or recommendations for departments on how to handle those change orders and like what to approve or what not to approve, so that it stays within the confines of their budget?
The change orders are tracked, they're tracked with each individual project on each individual contract. They're not tracked across the entire spectrum. So if we were talking a very specific road contract and there were change orders, all of those change orders would be captured in Workday with what's going on and moving forward with it. The goal, again, is to stay within the budget of the project. If there's more money, they have to go back to budget, go back to the board. But I don't track, or we don't track, every change order that's done across the board in a form that I can give you information on. On specific projects, we can go in and look in Workday, and we should see all the documentation tied there, where we could tell you.
Just, it may be in your estimation, you know how often you see, may see a change order with the project, 5% of them, 10%, just curious?
It depends upon the industry, sir. For us, right now in the Bureau, where, like I said, as we see usually price increases at time of renewal, we've had inquiries due to tariffs with asking for that, where we do require information from the business partner, such as the bill elating, the port of entry documentation, to make sure that whatever good we're getting is actually subject to that tariff. We haven't brought anything before the Board of Estimates, because nothing has been asked from us to move forward. We do challenge back. On a road construction project, depending upon the size and value, in my previous experience, on a $300 million road project, I've had well over 200 change orders. It just, it's part of the nature of the industry in construction that it's going to happen. Some of it's positive, some of it's negative. You've had change orders which balance out to zero. You've had change orders asking for time. On a large IT project, you might ask for a change order for more time, or because the system needs something, or they need, so it really depends upon the industry. Most of the items that we go through, the change orders are minimal that come out of the Bureau of Procurement. We don't see a lot. It's usually the most requested change order is when we go before the Board of Estimates, asking for more spend authority. And that's from the city side.
Thank you for answering that question. I guess my last question is, with me being new to the council, just getting more information on the timeline when preparing for budget, just wanted to get additional information, like when you all start reaching out to agencies to prepare for the budget process, and also, how do you handle considerations from agencies regarding increases in their budget?
So there's a section in the summary documents of the preliminary budget, as well as the executive summary, that outline, there's a whole section dedicated to budget process that outlines the calendars. We are essentially planning for the upcoming budget year. We start at the beginning of August, so it's essentially a 12-month cycle. So what happens at the beginning of August is, my team and I will prepare our initial forecast. That's what we call the current level of service forecast. And so what we're doing for both expenditures and for revenue is we're projecting either, based off of our existing revenue structures, how much revenue do we think we will generate next year? And then on the expenditure side, we are looking at how much it will cost us to provide the same level of service next year, based off of a variety of inflationary factors. That initial forecast informs whether or not we're starting the year with a surplus at budget or in deficit, and based off of where we are financially, that will inform the budget guidance that is given to agencies. We review that projection with the mayor's office. He establishes his budget guidance and priorities for the upcoming budget process, and that leads to a kickoff with agencies where we provide the budget guidance and walk through the deliverables that are required for their budget submission. Then we move into the agency request process that they have about, depending on the year, anywhere from six to eight weeks to put together their budget proposals. They write a proposal for each service that outlines their spending plan for those dollars, as well as goals for each of those services, and then updates on their performance metrics. Agencies have the opportunity at that point in time to submit their request for additional funding. We call those enhancement requests, and that's where they are seeking money to either expand service for an existing program or activity that we have, or to just do something brand new. After those materials are submitted to us, the budget team reviews them for completeness, and then we begin working directly with the administration to review all the budget requests and to begin to make decisions about how we will balance next year's budget. That is typically happening in the January, February timeframe. We are working to wrap up the recommendations for the preliminary budget by the end of February, early March, and that is when my team and I will then begin preparing the preliminary budget document that gets introduced to the Board of Estimates at the beginning of April. City charter requires that the board has 30 days to work with the preliminary budget recommendations before finalizing their budget. So that generally happens in early May, where they will vote on the BOE recommendations, and then the budget must be introduced to the city council at least 45 days before the end of the fiscal year to initiate this review process that we're currently in.
Well, thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it.
Our last question, Councilman Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone. I, picking up on several lines of inquiry here. of inquiry here, wanted to start on the procurement transformation process. The, you mentioned, Director, you mentioned significant progress made, much faster. I noticed last year it was only 55%. In FY24, only 55% were handled within 150 days. Do we have a sense of where that's tracking this year? I mean, what does a lot faster look like? What's the progress?
Yeah, Adam, do you have the, the number for this here? And while Director Manny looks up the number, I should mention that that metric is the last one in the pipeline. So it does take a little bit of time to flow through. The very first things we saw was just the, the amount of requisition, the number of requisitions that were with each particular staff member. Then the next number that started dropping was the number, the number of days that things were spending within just the Bureau of Procurement. The very last number to drop is this number that we track here, which is really the overall number that it takes to, like, the overall amount of, you know, amount of time that it takes for something to get from start to finish and whether it makes it under 150 days. That is the sign of a healthy process, but that's sort of the last step in the pipeline.
I appreciate that, Director.
And now with that said, yeah, I'm sorry. Adam, do you?
Thank you. I don't have that number handy, sir, but that 150-day number, right now, the numbers you see are when something's entered into the system, not necessarily when it hits the procurement queue to work on. And that's what we're working on. We're working with the Office of Performance Improvement to actually be able to gather that information directly out of Workday as we continue to go through the transformation process. The big change in the turnaround has been, as the director said, was originally the number of requisitions per procurement officer and how that has dropped. Quarterly, the number of outstanding requisitions, just as we went through when we gave the update to the BOE, in January of '23, when we turned the system on, as we moved into Workday, there were 515 outstanding requisitions. In April of this year, we're down to 138.
Great.
So all of these passed, and each quarter, that number has dropped more and more as we brought on staff, as we've continued. In January of 2023, we had several procurement officers who were trying to work on, like I said, over 100 procurements, which is almost impossible. Now we're down to where each one has roughly 22. So that time and that ability to turn that around, coupled with the efficiencies that we're making within the Workday system, by moving more things electronically, getting the processes set up, those numbers should change. I do, again, want to caveat it, as we pivot from an invitation to bid to the best value, that will, at times, extend it because there is negotiations that have to take place. We are spending more time looking at terms and conditions that are being put on the city and pushing back on those that are not favorable. And so that does take time. As we move from the buyer model to the procurement officer model, these are things that we're looking into, and some of these things take time, as we go back and forth with our business partners and go back and forth with the departments to make sure that we are getting the best value for the city.
Thank you. My second question will be about best value. The follow-up here about this, the, as part of the transformation, the 12 new procurement staff that are coming online are all being assigned to, or at least drawing their funding from stormwater, wastewater, and, stormwater, wastewater, and, and treated water utilities. Are they, I know that's where they're being paid from. Are they carrying particular responsibilities for procurement within those areas? If so, who was covering it before? Was that an area of weakness for us?
This is a, this is a net zero transfer from DPW to, to the Bureau of Procurement. This will create a dedicated team that just focuses on DPW procurement. This was an area of weakness previously in that it was being handled kind of ad hoc between DPW and the Bureau of Procurement, based on staffing availability. It will be handled now in a more centralized model within the Bureau of Procurement, but with those staff focused specifically on DPW. And these are, these were administrative positions, kind of more lowly paid, that had been vacant for a long time in DPW. They're going to be consolidated into procurement analyst positions. There's actually going to be fewer of them in the bureau when they're consolidated, but they're going to be quickly filled within the Bureau of Procurement.
Thank you, Director. On the best value solicitation side of things, what, what percentage of our, of our current RFPs have transitioned to that model? And is there, is there a goal that we're trying to get to with, with kind of the quantity that we're handling different ways?
There's not necessarily a goal. Each, each, each solicitation is independent of one another. It really depends upon what the best value is. So traditionally, if we are looking for a good, something very specific, and we are looking for the lowest price, we would do the invitation for bid. Now that we've moved to the best value, we are looking for customer service. We are looking for a variety of other different factors, and that depends. So it's more services, but there are goods involved. We're working with our business partners so that it's not just the low price. It could be something as chairs. Well, we just don't want the low price on chairs. We want to have the chairs locally sourced. We want to have them here. We want to be able to talk to you about customer service, delivery, a variety of other factors, and that changes the dynamic as we're moving forward. But if it's something for DPW or DOT that where they want a cog, we're probably going to use the invitation for bid because we're looking for the lowest price and the quickest way of getting it.
Very good.
That meets their specifications.
In, I- Councilman Parker, we're going to have to end here. We only had one additional follow-up this time, so you can follow up directly with Finance.
I have a formal request as part of this.
Okay.
Very good. Are you able to share the scoring charts that you use to, to score the, the best value solicitations? Are you able to provide us with rubrics by which those, those best value solicitation projects are, are scored or recommended?
Yes, sir. We do keep a template of what we use, but based upon each solicitation, we might change that based upon the nature of the solicitation. But yes, we can provide a basic rubric of the scoring template, what we're looking for, how we define it and everything of that sort. We do have that. We can get that easily.
Okay. Thank you. We'll get more information to you about that committee request. We are going to pause to reset for Visit Baltimore. Thank you to Finance and BBMR.